I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. See, you come to someplace, you just get abused, you know? Man, you could have stayed home for that. All right. We have minutes for nineteenth of September. Bruce wasn't here, so it's you and me, yeah?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for September nineteenth meeting.
And I would second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Did you have a couple minutes for a sign?
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, yeah, we just did those. How are you doing?
I'm good.
All righty. All right, then we have payroll to approve, an amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents.
I make a motion, we approve payroll with the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So it's the third, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, then we have to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable report, and that's a hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
And I make a motion, we acknowledge the receipt of payroll claims with the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand, three fifteen ninety-four. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. And I say this about every meeting, but just for the record, we are just acknowledging that we had a report from the auditor on the accounts payable. We have no idea if attacked or not, because no way we would know that. We are just acknowledging that we got the report. The accuracy of it or not, we do not know. All right, then we have claims, pretty hefty here, an amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And when the claim does not have contract signed, and per the resolution, we should have had a contract signed, but it's not signed.
Okay, what contract is it?
Elisa Reisman, we paid the, Elisa Reisman, four thousand dollars to approve the...
Budget stuff?
Budget stuff. We should have had a contract signed.
I would agree. Yeah, okay, well, we can do one now. Do we have one available?
No.
All right, I will go ahead and approve then. What we're talking about is the auditors told the council that they could approve someone to do the budget work, so long as it wasn't a council member doing the budget work. And so Elisa Reisman was hired to do the budget work, and that is what this is being paid for. Does that sound accurate to you, Nick, that that's okay to do that, that way?
Yeah, so you're wanting a contract done, Laura?
They should have presented a contract before we paid them.
Oh, okay.
As in, I can't remember which resolution number, but we've got a resolution number that Jim Misa signed and the other two commissioners.
So you're voting to approve the budget work, though, is that right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. We can go ahead and approve that and pay that without the contracts, so long as we have a contract coming, correct? Okay, so I make the motion, we go ahead and prove that amount of four thousand dollars to Elisa Reisman for work with the council.
Is that, again, clarify, Laura, that is a part of the five twenty-eight number that you've given us? So it's a part of this. So you're gonna make the motion for the whole thing, which includes the four thousand?
I can do that, yeah.
Or you want to just do the four thousand?
Well, if we're gonna have to have contracts specifically, let's go ahead and prove specifically for her, and then we can do the whole.
The rest of it, okay.
So I make a motion, we go ahead and enter into our contract, Elisa Reisman for those services.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay.
And then we still have the claims. Yeah, so then I'll also go ahead and make a motion that we approve the claims as presented. And it's five twenty-eight, six eighty-eight, sixty-eight, but it includes the four thousand dollars as well. And I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Nick, with something like that, when we approve from our side, and we know it's okay with the other side, the other ones who present that, but we haven't got the contract in hand, is that the same as a contract when we verbally agreed to do that?
No, you're gonna need something in writing, though, to make it enforceable.
So she can go ahead and pay it before she gets that contract, or she...
Right, well, in this instance, I mean, you know, if it were a stranger, well, we're not, you know?
Right, right.
But since we know what the contract's gonna look like.
So if it falls in your cycle, I go ahead and pay it, and then we'll get the paper contract to you.
That's for state board of council.
Oh, sure. Oh, it should be. I agree, it should be. You just can't be doing, doing stuff, but we've approved it here in open meeting. It's in the minutes that we've approved it, so we're just waiting on the paper contract to sign and clarify it.
Is she giving us one, or do you want me to draft one and provide it to her?
I don't have an answer to that. Whatever works for you, I'd take, I'd take go ahead and write one if you got time. I would, I really would have thought council would have had that taken care of, since it's really doing their work. I mean, she's doing their work.
I can ask them about it, I guess, and see what they say.
I can send you the copy of the resolution that Jim assigned in the past.
No, that's okay. I just need the terms of the contract.
Okay, what resolution are you talking about?
It's either in the year two fifteen or two sixteen, when George Nichols and Harbison was here and you were here. You all signed a contract that if a family member was involved, that there would be a contract to be signed.
Okay, that's fine with me. I think it makes sense. You just have to worry about...
It's on Gateway, too. That resolution can be found on Gateway, also.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. It's just more so I didn't know if I was doing it or if they were gonna give us one, basically. So I'll just get with the council on it.
Okay, it can be real simple things. She's already done the work about that, I think.
So the good thing about that is she's already performed, so then on our part, once she's performed, if we're paying, then...
That's what I thought while we were approving that.
It'd be different if she hadn't already done the work.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We've already got what we would be getting out of the contract, so...
Yes, yeah, and that was done at the request of the council. But they just can't do those contracts, I guess. I'm surprised they can't, they can hire an attorney outside of us, right? We don't have to prove their attorney contract.
Right, yeah.
So why do we have to approve this contract for them? It's just, it's just weird. It's just state government. I know how it works, it's just weird, yeah. All right.
We can go down the rabbit hole on how much it works if you want.
It's a slippery rabbit hole, too.
I don't know how much time you have.
Yeah, yeah. We're the, we're the state government, we're here to help, yeah, okay. All right, we have approved claims. Did we vote on claims already? We did, didn't we?
We did.
Bruce approved, made the motion, Dan seconded. All right. New business, John Ford was gonna be here, but he's not here, so we'll go ahead. Planning zoning advisory plan?
That's for RUC, I think.
For RUC.
Yeah. That's, that's something.
Fifteen acres out of between Crossroads.
Okay. Let me ask you this, while we're thinking about John Ford and Thrive. Thrive has an opportunity from the state, from, um... Not DMV, NDOT, NDOT, to do mileage, car, car traffic, traffic count. They did it last year. They have a grant from NDOT availability at eighty percent. Our twenty percent would be about the six hundred dollars. I don't know where that six hundred dollars would or should come, if it should be highway department, if it should be CVC paying for that, I don't know. But is that, are you here for that? Nope, okay. Are you shaking your head? I thought maybe you were here with that.
No.
Okay.
This one.
I thought maybe, maybe Ryan slipped somebody new in on me. I didn't recognize the face, okay. So the purpose of the traffic count would be, just to see what traffic in what areas, how much, what road improvements we might need, or where the traffic flow mainly is. It'd be good information for CVC, I guess, but also for sheriff's department, if they need additional people in certain places other than others. But it's gonna cost us six hundred dollars, our share of that eighty-twenty grant. Do you wanna spend six hundred dollars to do that? And then we decide where it comes from. Personally, I think it's a good count to have that information, but what do you think?
I, I would like to know that information, just because... Well, knowing what roads is heavily in traffic. Yeah, those are the roads you have to maybe concentrate more on as far as maintenance, but, you know, it's just speed limit signs and stuff like that. If we know that County Road four fifty north or whatever is most heavily trafficked road, then the sheriff's department may need to...
We'll have to decide where that comes from. I don't know what funds do we have available. Do we have six hundred dollars in any fund that we need to use or can use by the end of the year?
Six hundred? I'd have to check into that, see which we can use.
If you could, that'd be great. Let us know next meeting.
I'm sure we'd probably come up with that.
All right, great.
Does that data get made public?
Yes, yes, it is all. Everything on Thrive, in fact, with county governments are made public, so it's good to have, it's a good traffic count. They did it last year. And it's always really kinda surprising on who's wearing what roads they're taking where. And that will help us when we do our community crossing grant, because it's traffic count again, and traffic count bears heavily on the community crossings as well, so it's good to have those numbers. LTAP does those sometimes and can do those sometimes, but Thrive has the opportunity to do the same thing, and with the, with the grant then from NDOT to get that accomplished. So eighty-twenty grant's a pretty, pretty good deal. So I make the motion, and then we, we approve Thrive and go ahead and, and do the traffic counts for the Cover Bridge Festival, and we will pay over that six hundred dollars if matched.
I'll second that.
All right, move in second to approve the agreement with Thrive for the traffic count. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, close. Anybody? Nope. Okay. All right. Gateway Trails isn't here.
That was that letter I gave you a minute ago, Jim. It's...
Oh, is one here, okay.
Yeah, wanting to do a legal survey on McIntyre Street in Catlin, Indiana.
Okay. They need to do a survey on this street just to see where the right of way is and where they can put the trails and access or not, so we just need to... Approve. So those are speed limits, and that's the stop signs. Is there another thing?
This is the letter, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure I put it somewhere. All right. So they're just asking for a formal request and authorization to go ahead and do the legal survey on McIntyre Street. I don't know, can we stop someone from doing the survey?
Well, it's, they wanted the county, the commissioners to kinda request it, because part of that's county-owned property, and so they were just... You can't really stop them from doing a survey since they're adjoining property owner.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But they were one of the county that kinda expressed their...
And it says, in there it says, please, we're telling them to please proceed with the legal survey at your cost, and if you have any further questions, let us know. So I'd make the motion that we authorize the Gateway Trail Association to go ahead with the legal survey of McIntyre Street and Catlin.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's dealing with McIntyre Street and then right of way here, issues in there.
And by the way, they've, they've talked, and they are, we've talked about replacing that bridge in Rosedale and making a walk, a walk area on the side of it. But we're not convinced that that bridge needs to be replaced, so on the county side, so they're gonna build a separate bridge on property adjacent to it.
I kinda wondered that.
Yeah, so that's gonna be taken care of then. All right, we have an ordinance here for stop signs that were requested.
Just real quick, Jim, can we go back to the planning commission? I think we did that.
No, we didn't.
No.
We skipped it. You asked about it one before, the RUC.
Side track on the drive.
The fifteen, or they built a new building.
We have to do an ordinance, so...
All right. This is from Cassie here, okay. Ah, okay, I see who you're talking about. I was thinking that was just an update for us, nothing requested of us, but this is for their new stuff.
To rezone from Ag to...
Yep. RUC, if you didn't know, is building a new building out east of town on thirty-six, down in Adams Flats area there. So they are requesting a rezone, publication going from agriculture to commercial, general business. And I'm guessing this was approved by the planning commission, it just needs to come to us for the, for the ordinance to do that. So is there a motion to approve ordinance number, what number would it be? Twenty twenty-two?
Yes. I got an ordinance on stop signs, but where does this have an ordinance number now?
Third, third page.
Yeah. Ordinance.
It'd be, be oh eight.
Oh eight, okay. So ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, an ordinance to rezone part of Adams Township, and that's to go from, from agriculture to a general commercial business, so RUC can move their operations out there. It's fifteen acres.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we need the same day, same week for it?
Yeah.
Is everyone there, too? All right, then I make the motion, and then we approve ordinance twenty-two dash oh eight, same day, same week.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
What needs to be done. Sometimes we have to do those separately, sometimes they're included in the ordinance. I didn't know how this one was.
Everybody kinda writes them differently. I like to have them all in one.
See, I'm just having them separate, that's why I was looking for, but that's fine, so I thought it was done in this one.
I didn't write that one, Cassie did, but my ones, you'll notice, it's all one document, because we've had issues on things in the past where a page has been missing.
Yep.
If there was additional page.
Yep.
And then that becomes a legal fight.
Yep.
Whereas if it's all in the same document, you can't have a missing page.
I've had things sent to me that are multiple pages, and they want me to sign the signature page, and I go, well, I don't know what you're gonna put that signature page to.
I can just attach it to alternate page one and two.
Yeah, how do you know?
No.
Not that people would do that kind of a thing, but it does occur.
I've thought a couple of legal cases on that.
I bet you have. By the way, did Tim Yocum contact you?
Ah, yes, he did.
It's one, I just sent him your way. He asked who to contact, and I suggested you guys, so... I didn't even know what it's about, but he was asking names, so...
Yeah, I was making apple butter today up in Bloomingdale, so I haven't called him back yet.
Well, good. We loaded up on that before it's over.
Yeah, it's kinda therapeutic.
I used to be on the square, East of Star used to have them when I was a little kid.
Yeah, that's a fun process.
I sneak in the building, fill my pockets with the Red Hots, and hit the, hit the road.
Yeah.
Mom was there all the time. Well, I'm sure I was a blessing to her every day.
We always go up there and get some of that during the festival, but that, some of the proceeds go to the Bloomingdale Youth Association for the sports stuff, so...
Okay. All right, now we have an ordinance for stop signs, so if that was eight, is this one seven or nine?
This is seven.
Okay, so we have an ordinance number already established for the stop signs. And this would be... Now, this ordinance says Town of Rockville. Is that what you meant on top of that?
That is not what I meant. Where does that say that at?
In the front, first page at the top. Mine does.
Mine don't.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
Roads for...
I've got two of them here.
Do they say Park County? They say Town of Rockville?
Yeah, both these say Park County.
Okay, that'll work. That's just a...
Here, I'll give you this one.
Early, probably before we change it. All right, so I have a copy here.
You might cross off that E on the end of road.
Five fifty east and Rosedale Road. Yeah, there's an E on the road.
Just the English terminology, it's okay. Sure, sure, speaking languages thing.
I'm sure it's got that way somewhere.
That's right. It's old English, before your time, Jim.
Yeah, no, that is my time. That's the old English stuff, yeah.
Uh, sorry about that.
Probably when I turned forty years ago. All right. So we have ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash oh seven, replacing stop signs, and the stop signs would be... Intersection of County Road five fifty east and Rosedale Road in Park County. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the stop signs at five fifty and Rosedale Road. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do a same day, same week for that?
Yeah, they did, it's still been there for you.
It is in here already?
Should be.
All right.
Can I get two of those, get that one signed, plus this one signed? And the one I have, Jane, one for the auditors also?
Yep.
The other one doesn't say Town of Rockville, does it?
No.
Good. Sometimes you look at a computer long enough.
Oh, I understand. Been there.
I mean, I do letters to IRS or whatever, and use a copy of somebody else's.
You'll climb over the weekend, add a screen.
Make sure I change everything. Sometimes I...
I usually like to read them on different days if I can.
Does that have a fine or penalty on it?
Um, did I attach publication? Let's see. No, it just adopts IC nine dash twenty-one dash eight dash thirty-two, so that's Indiana code. This is just authorizing the placement. We're not using this as our enforcement mechanism. It's just authorizing placement.
Doesn't it be advertised, right?
The other one will be about, the one about the dead end road or whatever, one on...
All righty. All right. Not all the way in on ordinance of those two?
There should be one that has a...
In here?
I need two more signatures on this one.
You need what?
Two more signatures.
And a second one.
That's the better P in the one, too.
That'd be the same day, same week part, I bet. Okay.
Plus this one needs, and two more signatures.
Did you get the speed limit one, Jim?
Uh-uh.
There's one I...
We have not. I've got it here, though.
Okay.
Bruce, say it.
Okay.
Those are the only two I had, plus the zoning one. Okay.
All right, there's stop signs.
Very much.
That's the one that says Town of Rockville. Does it say Town of Rockville on your copy?
I don't have one.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'll just bring it to the next meeting if that's right.
Yep, works for me.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Yeah, I think I have yours, because I have two of those.
You mean, we're not the only people that you work for?
Same for you. Are those people I use that for?
Yeah.
Well, believe it or not, I've been doing this kinda stuff long enough. I have templates for most things.
Sure you do. Okay, we have the request from the county board, Board of Health, for member additions. When Stephanie was here, the, all of the Ds and Rs were appropriate and fixed. And the vacancies we have to fill are numbers five and six on that, that page. Angela Hatfield and Stephen Waltz, licensed physicians. And then on the bottom, number seven, one of those... One of those five we have to appoint.
Let me get clarification. Angie and Steve, they want to be, or they are wanting to be off of the board?
No, they want to be on. They want to be on the board. They've, they've been asked.
Okay.
They haven't accepted, I don't think, but I understand Stephanie's talked to them both, and they're both willing. State statute says that there shall be two...
Two physicians. That's why I was wondering. If they did not want to do it, we'd have to find two physicians.
And we don't have to, well, and they have to be counted, physicians in the county, and we only have two.
That's a shame.
But you can leave, let's see, vacant if you have to. If one of the appointments is not acceptable, two, you can do that. And I don't know that either of these would not be acceptable. I may disagree with them on some things, but there's, they are licensed physicians, and we are talking about health board appointments, so whatever you guys think. So we have to point five, six, and then one of seven, but we have five people there to choose from. And if we appointed five and six as requested, we would have four Republicans and two, two Democrats. One Democrat and an independent, so four Republicans, one Democrat.
The law says you can't have more than four of the same party.
Right, more than a simple majority, yep.
We're fine there.
So Republicans...
No matter who we pick in seven, that's not going to change the four.
No, that won't change anything.
Right, right. So whichever lose five and number seven, the only one I really know are John Ferguson and Veronica Hill, and they're both fine. I'm sure they're all, I'm sure they're all five fine, so I just don't know who they are.
I know three of them, that's all I know. Dan, do you know the church officer Marietta's down there?
No, I don't.
I didn't know if that Marietta was any relation to, to Marietta.
I don't know.
Has the, or the diesel.
Not that I'm aware of.
Big equipment repair place there, so...
Typically, boards like this come to us with a recommendation on who their choice is. So we can wait until they do, they have them recommend to us, but I don't know if they are listed priority-wise, but they're not alphabetical, so maybe they are priority-wise from the top down. Would be their first choice, non-down. I do know Veronica Hill, that's Jim Hill's wife. She's a schoolteacher. She's a fine, fine lady. Do you have any qualms about any of them?
No, I have no problem with any of them.
Then I'll go ahead and make the motion, and that we fill those vacancies by appointing Angela Hatfield, Stephen Waltz, and Veronica Hill to fill those three positions.
I second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll go by motion, too.
All right. Then we have a holiday schedule to go through. Any changes on that from any dates?
No, the, on the backside of it, I showed you what the state schedule is. I've taken off the two election days that the state employees get, because the county doesn't have an election.
Okay.
So I removed those off of, of the county schedule.
Okay.
The Columbus Day on the state side is October the ninth.
Right.
And we usually take ours during the festival.
Yep.
And this time it does fall on the second, um, second weekend.
Yeah, it'd be the, be the Monday of festival, yeah.
So I changed that Columbus Day to October the sixteenth.
Yep, that'd be right.
In the middle of the festival.
Yep. Okay. Motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the holidays as presented by the auditor. Let's just count and make sure they have the same number.
You are live.
Twelve on each side, so I second Dan's motion.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved as presented. All right, then we have a Park County library. Nellie Myers is retiring. And her term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, but she's ready to step down now. And the board recommends Elisa Wilson to be appointed to this position, as Paul Wilson's a wife. They've been married quite some time. And she would, they say she would be a great asset to elaborate word, and I would have to agree with that. I think she's just, just fine, fine lady.
So, after being said, I make a motion, we appoint Elisa Wilson to the library board. I'll second that.
Move in second to approve Elisa Wilson to finish the term of Nellie Myers. Although I read one of them. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That would be for her, okay.
And then the next one, Jim, I added on to the agenda at the last minute.
Yes, what did he call me? Good, I'm glad you did that.
Yeah, because these are for the health board inspections, for the festival, and stuff like that.
Okay, same contract, same everything, and we did, did it last year, and so we just need to approve it for this year.
I drafted it.
She has got people to do that job now, so we're covering. So we just need a motion to approve the contracts with the health department for the inspectors for the Cover Bridge Festival.
There's three contracts.
Okay. Do we need to approve them individually, or just for the whole? Okay, I'd make motion, we approve the, the people recommended by... sanitation officer, uh, to do the, uh, health inspections during the Cover Bridge Festival.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, I will make a.
So Jamie, Jamie Montgomery, Rob in New York, and Lindsay York.
In, uh, subsection three, Jim, but as you sign those. It says the twenty-one Cover Bridge Festival.
Oh, it does.
She just used the old contract, yeah.
So could you just make that twenty-two?
Initial next to it, Jim.
Initial next to it. All three of them say twenty-one.
Yeah, that's a template we gave her last year.
Glad you remember that, Laura, because I would have forgotten.
Yep, the festival's starting right away, and I do have a problem with our credit card machine. Um, that new credit card that we got from the state is not working properly, and this is a critical time for it.
Need to let, there she is, she's coming in.
What's not working, Laura?
Our credit card thing is.
What, what is it that's not working?
We were told, the Health Department said that they, they can't use their days and we weren't supposed to be using ours.
I haven't heard a thing about it.
She's having trouble getting the payments to go through the credit card, and we contacted Randy.
Randy is not the person you should contact. You should let me know, and then I can get with our web developers and if it's an issue on their end. I know there was an issue last Friday.
Right.
There was a server down. That was on, on the developer side, and we needed to let them know. And I know Randy was trying to track it down, but he wasn't the person that would be able to diagnose it. So is that the same issue you're having today?
Yes. So we're right in the middle of taking all those T M Ls.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, you're still capable of using the PayGov right now. I mean, nothing's shut off there.
What do you mean the PayGov?
Your, that you used before we did the N I C.
Um, I was, I didn't think we still had that, but we can.
Yeah, you should still have it.
Go try that tomorrow.
That's not been shut off yet, yep.
Okay.
That's what you're saying, right? It's, it's still operational?
Yeah, I mean, there's not been anything turned off. Um, in fact, we found a couple of people were still using it, not the new one.
Okay.
I'd rather use the old one for right now to get it, to get us through this.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, but it's the same server error that I think Alex got last Friday?
Yes, and like.
Okay.
One of the I T people called me to, to South Dean about three thirty, and I told her and she was aware that there is a problem with it.
I T person from?
The state. Emily, Emily was her first name. Emily Davis.
Yeah, so she was one of them we worked with?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you weren't expecting Randy to fix it because unfortunately he doesn't have the, I mean, access to one he would need to fix it.
Okay. That will all settle down eventually.
We'll use the old one for right now because that is what works best.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I don't think I have anything additional. The only words I have is seven twenty will not be getting paid until I have the festival now. I, I, one of the roads we had under the community coffins grant, they hadn't gotten around to it yet, and Randy said that the crew from the company to do the paving got called down to Bloomingdale or someplace to go there. And now they're not going to try to start up from seven twenty to the festival now because they won't get done that way halfway through all the traffic comes.
Yep.
So there are some big holes, and then I asked Randy if he could get those holes on seven twenty. He was, he's going to go, uh, send some guys. We are not paving at the moment, uh, down on Pipeline and Jessup Road. Because our, our paper went down, but he expects it was a part, and he expects to have that up and running tomorrow. So hopefully they'll be back to paving on that. And a couple of days will be too cold to pave. We've got some fifty degree days coming up, so it's going to be too cold to pave, so. Just, uh, ain't nothing easy. That's just the way it is. All right, and Janie was going to bring the county highway bids up for us to sign. Oh, that's what that is in the back here, okay. So, um, so, so what is it we have to do? Are we just acknowledging that these are the bids we had? Because we don't accept these until January.
Now, this is the bid or the, uh, advertisement.
Yeah, so we're just signing telling them to go ahead and advertise, right? It always seems so to me, but I know we do it. We just need one sign? Do you have a special one you want to sign?
I have one right here to be signed.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
All three of us.
Yep.
I'll just make a motion that, uh, we approve, uh, the, uh, advertising of the, uh, material bids for the Highway Department.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. You guys have anything you want to bring up? Nope, okay. How are things in your world? Any people more peaceful than they've been, or?
It's always busy.
Well, I know. That was enlightening last time. I really appreciate your coming presenting that, all that stuff. I appreciate that.
Anytime. We got you down for December for our next quarterly presentation.
Uh, I'm sure these guys do too, but I get asked, what is it that we're doing? Not just what we're paying for, although that is always part of it too. There's always somebody like, oh, I, I was paying for you. I understand the question. But we just don't know what we're doing for the people who are having those troubles. So it was really, really educational. I really appreciate you going to do that stuff.
Absolutely.
I still don't know how you count successes and failures. I just don't know how you do that every day, but I'm sure, I'm glad someone is doing that every day.
Sometimes it's two steps forward, three steps back.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, yep. I had good friends that were special education teachers, same thing, you know, and it's just not for me. I need to be productive every day, so we did, we just did that yesterday. Why are we doing it again today? But you guys fight that problem. Like you said, step forward and two back and do it all over again.
Absolutely.
I am not patient enough for that. All right, you, you got something for us, Jessica?
Just did a few things, not much.
Okay. How many days you got left? You counting up?
No, I've been too busy. I thought I was going to kind of ease out of it.
Yeah, and I haven't.
Worked that way.
It won't work that way.
Uh, seventy inmates in jail, eleven are DOC. We picked up seven from Sullivan County. So we're starting to do that again now with COVID's slack way down, so.
Are they building a jail?
Mm-hmm.
I thought they were. How long will that take, you know?
What did he tell me? I don't know if it's eighteen months for two years. It's.
I just saw it last week at a meeting. I thought it was going to be a couple of years or close to.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure they have all the issues with this all good. Do you know if they're still struggling over some things?
Nah, that I don't know. I know he said he was in a mess with inmates and, so.
Uh, when do you get transferred inmates? What kind of inmates do you get? What kind of crimes have they done? What kind of things do you get? Do they send you the good ones or the bad ones?
He said this time that he would send us the good ones, and so far they have been.
Okay.
Usually we get the worst, no matter what body, it doesn't matter what county it's.
Get them out of here, send us a warning.
Yeah, it could be a medical nightmare, it could be violent, or.
And if you weren't taking care of theirs and it's a medical issue, do we pay the medical bill for them since they're in our jail or do they?
They do.
They're their patient, no matter where they stay. Okay, that's good.
And we, we'll send them to hospital, but they'll send their staff to me and I'll really, relieve them, so. Um, eleven thousand nine ninety, ninety-five cents for collections for the year. And for housing, DOC, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one fifty-two fifty so far. And we're averaging twelve thousand, four hundred and fifteen, so should end right around one fifty, maybe a little bit more.
Okay.
So.
Flesh valves all up and working?
So far, and they're replacing the resonator furnaces now, so.
Yes, okay.
Like I've got two done and several with their.
Okay.
So.
I talked with Matt Steckley, um, about the siding still, and of course they can't get anybody to make a bid on it, but they're all slumped, of course, after post-COVID stuff because they got money now to do those things with. Um, and he has pushed from every direction that he could. He thinks we just need to take a breather with it and for, over the winter, because nobody's going to bid on it over the winter anyway. Then again, come spring, go ahead and put at least bid again and see what we're getting that time. You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not going to fall off. What do you think, Dan?
I mean, there's some of appealing. It's not, it's a few spots. It's not the whole thing, so.
Do we need to repair it all, or just repair the bad spots?
We tried to check into that. We never could get anybody even calls back.
We can't get anybody to tell us anything on that project, so. I don't know if we should just replace, repair the bad spots.
I don't know.
And see what happens. If we're going to have to hire somebody local, come in and do that, maybe that's the way to go. Just repair what's bad, and then if it gets bad, have them come back and do some more down the road.
We tried to call, well, it was McAllisters. I don't, something else now, I think, but couldn't, couldn't anybody show up, so.
There's nothing magical about the, about the stuck, because we're looking to take all that off and just replace it with metal siding on the side now, right?
Yeah.
We should be getting somebody to do that. How many feet would you think these would be replaced? Fifty feet?
Maybe. It's in different spots.
Yeah.
But it's.
Yeah.
And some of it looks fine, and when you hit it, it's.
Hope you figure it through, Jerry.
Yeah, it's.
Peel off.
Hard to say for sure, but I mean, it's not.
And could it be two different companies? Hire somebody to come take it all off and haul it off, and then somebody else to put it back on?
Yeah, I don't know what.
Probably some demo companies who would come in and take all that off, you know, I would think, and then, then hire somebody to put it back on. I mean.
You should definitely want to make sure that it was coordinated, you had a contract signed to.
I mean.
Starting date, completion date.
I'm not saying Dan should, but even companies like Dan who do that kind of work, I would think any of those companies could do that kind of stuff. I guess we're just putting up neighbors and fasten the metal to it. Is that all there is to it? I mean, is that pretty much it?
There'll be some heavy duty trim package and stuff.
Sure. So maybe.
You don't have the inmates in jail you can use, do you?
Not really, not really.
Not yet.
Yeah. Well, we could work on that. Pass a few ordinances and see what we get.
That's, that's everything.
I guess we just need to revisit it again after bad weather.
That's what, that's what he was saying. He just thinks you need to start a rest and go get it again in the spring. And if we need to look at that, about just having somebody come demo it and somebody follow up and put it back up. I mean, not to say the Amish should or shouldn't do, don't mean that, but I know there are Amish who, old builders who can do that kind of thing. They can come up and put it on and record.
And it lasted whatever, twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Supposedly it's a bad batch. I think that's what Matt said, that he talked to a couple of other jails when we built the same time, same way.
How does that happen? How does that hap, a bad batch? It's like a road.
That sounds like Bloomingdale Road.
How does that happen? Jeez. All right, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
How's your staff? Are you fully staffed now?
Uh, we're one deputy short, and then Chris McCann's still out, so, so basically two deputies short.
Any expectations with Chris? Does he expect to come back and?
Yeah, he has a procedure this month, and I think he said there's like four or five weeks downtime.
Okay.
And then basically just the doctors got to release him to drive after that, so.
What a time he has had.
Oh, yeah.
How old's he? Had his school.
Thirty-three.
Okay, I was saying early, early thirty.
That's what I would have guessed.
Tough road he's had. You guys have anything for us? Jessica, you any good with taking down siding and putting siding back up on the field? Looking for a side job here while we're doing this? All right, then I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
I've got one question. Um, so Chris McCann is still considered as an employee?
Once the final check goes out, then he is not, we have to retire him, so. I don't know where we're at on the payroll part of it, so.
So I should pay him totally out and be done with it then, or?
No, whatever we made the agreement to, take care of his, his pay was being used for cover his interests and such.
Right.
Yeah.
So just keep, keep it like that until that's, until that's done. Do we have a date and end date on that one that would run out?
Tours end of December.
I was going to, two of December, January, last time I talked to him.
Yes, just tours end of December. You won't have anything in January.
All right, we just need to check on that, make sure that we got that in the right place.
Was what we agreed to.
He said his doctor may release him early to drive, and that's, that's our old.
It would be good if they would, it really would, so you'd have to start.
Yes.